Good evening. Welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for April 10, 2023. If I could get everybody to rise and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Roll call, please, city planner.
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morsi.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
And Commissioner Malik.
Here.
Let the record show that all planning commissioners are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips to speak?
Chairman Rosales, no, we do not this evening.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to approval minutes from our last meeting then of March 27. I'll entertain any discussion, edits, or motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Custer and a second by Commissioner Malik. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I don't see anything listed on our consent calendar, and I don't see anything listed under transportation items, so we will go to our first of two planning, or excuse me, public hearing items. Public hearing item number four is consideration of a development plan and a regular coastal permit to allow the construction of a two-story triplex located at 1331 Bush Street. I'll start with disclosures. Read the staff report and took a quick drive by that area. Vice Chair Morsi.
Read the staff report and visited the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer.
Read the report and drove by the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik.
Read the report, very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Simons.
I read the report, reviewed the plans.
Commissioner Balma.
Read the staff report and did a site visit.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dodds.
Read the staff report, and I'm familiar with the area.
Great. Good evening, Delaney. How are you?
I'm good.
You're going to walk us through this? Go right ahead.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Delaney Carmen with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present Agenda Item Number Four, Development Plan D-2215. The applicant is requesting a development plan and regular coastal permit for the construction of a two-story triplex and associated improvements at 1331 Bush Street. The site is located in the East Side Capistrano Planning Area and the non-applicable jurisdiction of the local coastal program. The project site is designated Coastal Residential High Density by the City's General Plan and Medium Density Residential by the City's Zoning Ordinance. The site is bordered by a mix of single-family and multifamily residences in all directions. The proposed project consists of a two-story apartment building with three for-rent residential apartments and three covered parking stalls. Units average around 950 square feet and would all consist of a two-bedroom, two-bedroom floor. A clean stucco finish and minimalist design would be complemented by large landscape patio areas in both the front and side yards to create a project that improves on the existing infill site and is consistent with the eclectic housing in the neighborhood. In terms of zoning ordinance compliance, the project complies with all applicable development standards for the R3 district. As detailed in the staff report, staff has evaluated the project and finds it consistent with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and local coastal program. The project's proposed density is consistent with the surrounding multifamily residential land use, and the eclectic architectural style would integrate the project into the surrounding neighborhood and improve the existing site by providing updated housing and landscape. The project complies with development standards of the R3 zoning district, and there will be no impact to public coastal access and no removal of parking. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission confirms issuance of a Class III categorical exemption per CEQA Article 19, Section 15, 332, infill development projects, and approves Development Plan D-2215 and Regular Coastal Permit RC-2210 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P10 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant will not be presenting, but they and myself are both available for any questions.
Thank you. Delaney, any questions for Delaney? Don't see any. Any questions for the applicant? They're not doing a presentation, as I understand, but they're here for any questions. If you'd like to come forward, come forward. Are you the applicant or associated with the applicant?
No, I'm here.
Okay. Hang on a second. Let me just confirm the applicant.
Yeah.
He's here. He's ready to answer any questions. You're not doing a presentation, though, at this point, sir? Okay, great. So it is a public hearing. Go ahead, forward. Now, give us your name and your address. Either one of those is fine. You have three minutes.
I'm...
Speak into the mic if you wouldn't mind.
Kirsty Butler. I'm at 1336 Bush Street, exactly across the street. I just wanted to know a couple of questions. The first one is regarding, well, two of them actually are kind of regarding parking. The property has, from what, looking at the plans, it looks like there will be eight bedrooms. My home has three bedrooms, and we can't find parking on our street. It's a total of two parking spaces plus one handicap, so that'll be eight bedrooms with pretty much two parking spaces if that handicap isn't utilized. That's a lot of extra parking. Sometimes we have to park a block over for three cars. So that's one concern is just parking. And also, I wanted to know if the city allows parking for materials while it's being built, or there are going to be big dumpsters on the street that's also going to take up additional parking during the time it's going to be built, and also how long the project is going to take. Currently, my son is a police officer, works nights, still at home, so every day the construction will be going on. It'll be disturbed through the process, so I'm not opposed to it. I just have concerns.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any slips for any other speakers?
Chairman Rosales, no, we're not on this item.
If you didn't submit a slip, that's okay. You can still come forward and address the commission before I close the public hearing. I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close it, and I'll direct the questions heard by the neighbor to Delaney or city planner. So I think parking meets the standard according to the staff report, but maybe you can elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. So for properties in the coastal zone, they're subdivided prior to several centuries ago.
For properties that were subdivided prior to 1958, there's special parking provisions for those properties.
And it's allowed just one parking space for one- and two-bedroom units.
Okay.
So for three units, that would be three covered spaces.
So they meet the standard, even though it's already tight there, it sounds like, in the neighborhood? And then what about the construction staging and then the time of construction? Sounds like, again, it's a close-knit neighborhood, and we want to be mindful of that, but if you want to...
Sure. Chairman Rosales, members of the planning commission, were the applicant or developer desired to, you know, place any materials or dumpster, as an example, on the street? They would have to get an encroachment permit from the city. The city transportation engineering division would review that request and take all these things, factors, into consideration. I can't say for certain it would be approved or it would be denied, but there is a process in place to allow for that.
Would that be the same for the alleyway?
I believe it would, because that's public right of way.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Go ahead, Commissioner Balma.
I was just curious. Like, I know they've proposed a handicap space. Are they required to, or is this just something they do because maybe the possibility of renting it to a handicap person?
Commissioner Balma, I'm not 100% certain if Americans with disability actually requires a handicap parking space. I'd have to defer that question to our folks in the Build Division who review for compliance with that requirement. I'm going to just assume that because they're providing it, it's got to be a required amenity that they have to provide. Perhaps the applicant may know the answer to that question.
Commissioner Balma, are you thinking that if it's not required, maybe it gets, it isn't a handicap, and that way you've got some additional spot?
Yeah. I just don't know. I thought three units, I just thought three units was, you know, to have to provide one, it's kind of, unless you're going to already have someone in your family that, you know, you're renting it to, whatever, that worked out possibly for the applicant. I'm just guessing.
Or it was constructed as an ADA unit, perhaps?
Yeah, that's what it is, because if you look at some of the way the planning is done, on how the bathrooms are accessible, it was designed as an accessible unit, so I just...
The challenge there, I guess, then, is, oh, sorry, is if it's a one-space-per-unit, it's an ADA unit, but it's not occupied by an ADA individual. We have a parking spot that's supposedly built for the unit, but you have a catch-22 where somebody can't park there.
Yeah.
So I can understand the concern. All of our neighborhoods are getting more and more crowded on the streets, so we certainly appreciate the neighbors' perspectives. It's something that's kind of an open-ended question. Do you, by default, then lose one of the spots because it's only there for an ADA person or not? Don't know.
So maybe city planner, if we could have you take a look into that? If it's a requirement, and/or if not, then maybe it gets converted over to a regular parking spot?
Chairman Rosales, that's something we could look into. I know, and I'm not sure if this project exceeds that threshold, but when certain multifamily projects are developed, a certain percentage has to be accessible for folks with disabilities.
Right.
I'm not sure if this three-unit project triggers that requirement. Perhaps the applicant would like to address this. Maybe he's designing it to appeal to a certain segment of the population that's underserved with respect to rental units in this particular neighborhood. There's maybe a reason why an ADA unit's been designed.
Fair enough. Sir, would you mind coming forward, and maybe you have some insight into our questions here? If you could, for the record, give us your name.
Daniel Monajoe.
Thank you.
We were required by the city to put an ADA parking spot.
Okay. There we go.
It wasn't something we wanted to do. It took up more space. We could have probably got another spot if we didn't have to have all the ADA compliant, but it was a requirement.
Okay.
And we had to give one unit that was ADA.
Yeah, I've read it. It's in here somewhere, that it has three units or more, it has to be ADA compliant. Yeah. Yeah. It wasn't in the staff report, it was in the...
Oh, resolution.
Yeah, it was in the resolution. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant while you're here? No? Thank you, sir. Okay. So there we have it. Any other questions or comments? If none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I have a comment just on the face of the building. It just seems very bland, and just by doing very little details, a little relief around the windows or something, and then some coloring could make, you know, right now, there's just an empty lot, and this is something new, so maybe the owner would consider that as far as maybe putting a little relief in the front of the building, just to make it, give it some relief and not make it look so like a two-dimensional project.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. With that said, I would like to make a motion that we approve staff's findings. And we confirm issuance of a CEQA Guidelines, Article 18, Section 15, 332, and to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2023 and Regular Coastal Permit RC-2210 and findings and conditions of approval attached to it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Morsi for approval. A second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Malik. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, and good luck, neighbors. Item five this evening is our second public hearing item. It's consideration of a development plan and density bonus to allow mixed-use development consisting of 323 residential units, 33 of which are very low-income households, and the applicant is Modera Melrose. I'll start with the disclosures. Staff report, drove by the location, and then received, I believe, like the other commissioners, a number of emails related to this consideration tonight. Vice Chair Morsi.
I read the report, visited the site. I did not get a chance to look at what we received today, and that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
Read staff report, reviewed the email that was sent today, and I'm familiar with the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma.
Pretty much the same. Pretty much the same, staff report, emails, very familiar with the site. We've studied the site for years. I think it was supposed to be a commercial site at one time, and now it's switched over to housing. So we've looked at this piece of ground for a number of years now.
Yeah, I remember that. Commissioner Simons.
I reviewed the report, the emails, and I'm familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik.
Read the report, the emails, and I'm very familiar with the site.
Thank you. And Commissioner Custer.
I read the report and the emails and looked at the site online.
Terrific. Good evening, Sergio.
Thank you, Chairman Rosales, members of the planning commission. I'm Sergio Modera, city planner for the City of Oceanside and the project manager for the Modera Melrose mixed-use development. The 7.4-acre site is located at the easterly boundary of the City of Oceanside, where it interfaces with the City of Vista at the southeast corner of Melrose Drive, where Oceanside Boulevard transitions to West Bovier Drive. Surrounded uses include mixed, I'm sorry, multifamily development in the City of Vista to the north and south, a single-family development in the City of Vista to the east, planned development consisting of multifamily and single-family residences to the north across Oceanside Boulevard in a project known as Melrose Heights. To the west of the project site is an existing gas station with a convenience store, and there's also the Melrose Sprinter Station, which makes this site a smart-growth opportunity area site as identified by Sandag. Also should be noted to the south and west of the site is segments of the inland rail trail that have been constructed within the City of Vista and Oceanside. The site's zoning is neighborhood commercial. Under the neighborhood commercial designation, mixed-use developments are allowed pursuant to Section 3042 of the zoning ordinance. Surrounding zoning includes a specific plan, general commercial, and single-family and industrial lands in the City of Vista. Tonight, the planning commission is being asked to consider a mixed-use development consisting of 323 apartment units and approximately 2,400 square feet of ground-level commercial. Also being asked to consider a density bonus application that will allow the site's density to be increased by 50% in return for reserving 15% of the base density units for very low-income households. Part of the density bonus request, applicant is requesting waivers of development standards with respect to floor-area ratio, an increase in allowable building height, reduction in front yard setbacks, and adjustment in the width of parking stalls adjacent to structural columns, and an increase in the height of allowable retaining walls and allow the retaining wall not to be plantable. There are 323 units proposed in the project. There are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. The smallest one-bedroom unit is approximately 660 square feet, and the largest three-bedroom unit is approximately 1,430 square feet. Overall, the project would incorporate 23 different floor plans. The units are proposed to be spread out within six buildings on-site. Five of those buildings are four stories in height, with one of those buildings, building number five, being five stories' height along the Bovier elevation due to the site's elevated topography from the intersection of Bovier and Melrose Drive. 526 parking stalls are being provided in a combination of private garages, open stalls, private garages, and in a subterranean parking garage. Proposed amenities include an interior recreation area that consists of a clubroom and a fitness center, pool and spa, barbecue areas of custom shade structures, television wall for residents to entertain, and shaded private lounge areas throughout the pool area. Commercial uses are located at the project entry at Sports Parkway, and they could include uses such as eating establishments and retail stores. Depicted before you is the site plan showing the five buildings, how they lay out. Building one includes the commercial component of the project. It also includes approximately 1,700-square-foot leasing office. Building two, three, four, and five are purely residential buildings, with building four being the smallest building containing 21 units, and building three being the largest unit containing 108 units, in addition to a subterranean parking garage. These elevations will give you an idea of the street perspective along Bovier Drive. This is building number one at the project entry with its side. Commercial, you could see the glazing, the storefront glazing on the ground floor with that elevated ceiling height to give it the commercial look and appeal. There's a combination of materials that have been incorporated into the project. There's a, the architecture is Irving Gill-inspired and includes concepts from the Irving Gill design genre that includes covered arched colonnades and breezeways. Here's another, just a rear elevation of building one and a side elevation. I'm just showing you a couple of the buildings as they might appear from the public view. This is building number six, which is immediately west of building one, so this would be the street-facing facade and the side facade. This is the interior elevation that shows a building that's been designed with single-car garages. These single-car garages also have a tandem parking space designed in front of them. Here's an elevation of building five as it might appear from the interior. Here's a perspective from Sports Parkway and West Bovier Drive and give you an idea of what the street scene might look like once the development is constructed. Here's an example of the color and material boards with the use of different shadings of colors and stucco and different materials with respect to handrails and doors and trellises. It gives the nice appearance to the building. See, there's both horizontal and vertical movement within the building facades to give it some architectural relief and some visual interest. The landscape plan has been designed in accord with the city's landscape design standards. Overall, the project as proposed exceeds the minimum landscaping requirement of 15% by providing 25 and 1/2% of the site in landscaping. It also complies with the permeable surface requirement of the urban forestry required by providing 22, 25% of the site where the requirement is 22% in permeable surfaces. And finally, the tree canopy requirement of 12% is exceeded by 20%. So overall, the site's been designed to eventually, at maturity, 32% of the site area will have a tree canopy. So the base density of the neighborhood commercial zoning district is 29 units per acre. To calculate the maximum potential under the existing zoning, you multiply the site area by the maximum allowable density, and you round up. So for this site, under the zoning ordinance with no density bonus involved, the maximum number of units that could be yielded is 215. Based on the site, on the project's proposed, a reservation of 15% of the units for very low-income households, they're entitled up to a 50% density bonus. So you calculate the affordable homes calculation by multiplying the number of units by 15%, and that's how we end up with 33 income-restricted units. And then you calculate the density bonus by multiplying the maximum number of units allowed under the zoning ordinance by 50%, and you round up the resultant number, which is 108 units. That gives us the total of 323 units as being proposed by the project. With density bonus comes the ability to have an incentive or concession granted along with waivers of development standards. Real briefly, incentives or concessions are those requests that are economically driven that end up resulting in true cost savings to produce affordable housing. Waivers are associated with physical constraints that a development standard might present to a project that wouldn't allow a project to be built at the density proposed. In order to deny an incentive or concession request or a waiver, planning commission would have to make a finding of specific adverse impact, which has a very specific definition. It's outlined here on the screen, and I won't go ahead and read it, and I think that a lot of these planning commissions have been through and understand what a specific adverse impact, the threshold and the standard is pretty high to me. This project would be entitled to free incentives or concessions, but the applicant is choosing not to take advantage of any of those. With respect to development standards, this, following several slides, highlight the development standards for which a waiver is being sought. So in this instance, with respect to setbacks, there's a front yard setback that's being requested for a waiver. The 15-foot is the requirement, 10-foot is what's being proposed. All the other setbacks meet the city's zoning standards. With respect to floor-area ratio, the project as designed exceeds the FAR floor-area ratio that's permitted of 1.2 by 0.09% or by 9%, so they're proposing a floor-area ratio of 1.29% to accommodate development at the density proposed. Respect to building height, only one of the buildings exceeds the allowable height allowed in the CN zoning district. That's building number five. It's a maximum height of up to 56 feet, and with its architectural elements, it goes up to 62 feet, where the zoning ordinance allows a 50-foot maximum building height and a 60-foot maximum height for architectural elements. With respect to parking, the project complies with density bonus requirement for parking. However, they are asking for a waiver to reduce the minimum width or the minimum width of the parking stalls when it's adjacent to a structural column within the parking structure. As proposed, the project's proposing 526 parking stalls. Finally, the last two waivers being sought are, one is for overall open space. There's a base standard being proposed as part of the mixed-use development requirement of 200 square feet per unit. The project actually averages about 159 square feet per unit with respect to open space. And finally, the retaining wall height, there's a waiver being sought, given the site's topography and the need to provide a retaining wall. Were it to be plantable in a minimum of, a maximum of six feet, the project wouldn't be viable. Plantable wall requires what they call a batter, requires the retaining wall to lean back into the site. That were to be the case, if that was the requirement, it would shrink the available building area thereby, precluding the project at the density proposed. So waivers being sought to accommodate the density being proposed. With respect to parking, the zoning ordinance and state density bonus law requires 170 spaces for density bonus projects. As proposed, the applicant is proposing 526 parking spaces, with eight of those spaces available for the commercial uses. Were this project to be developed without a density bonus and under the base standards for the zoning ordinance, parking requirement would be 693 spaces, but that's not the case with this project. This project is subject to not only the state density bonus parking requirement, but also the city's density bonus parking requirement. And given its proximity to the Melrose Sprinter Station, that parking requirement is half a space per unit, and so this project far exceeds that requirement. So given, the staff has reviewed the project in conformance with the general plan and have found that the project is consistent with the housing element, the energy and climate action element, and the climate action plan. With respect to the housing element, the project's providing additional housing stock for future residents of the city. Short-term rentals would be prohibited with this project, given that it's a density bonus project, and the project is providing 33 on-site affordable housing units for very low-income households. With respect to the energy and climate action, the project is being cited in a smart-growth opportunity area that's within an urbanized area of the city, and it is consistent with the draft's Smart and Sustainable Corridor Specific Plan. Smart and Sustainable Corridor Specific Plan is currently being prepared. This project meets all the... This project meets all the requirements to be part of that. This is how the city envisions growth occur in the future in projects like this within our major east-west transit corridors. Finally, the project is compliant, is consistent with the Climate Action Plan as it would provide three hundred and twenty-three units in a smart growth opportunity area. Combined with the Ocean Creek Project, that gives the city over six hundred units within smart growth opportunity areas. The Climate Action Plan has a measure and a target for 2024 to provide five hundred and fifty units within smart growth opportunity areas. This project, in addition to this Ocean Creek Project, would allow the city to exceed that target goal for 2024. With respect to CEQA, an environmental impact report was prepared for the project. Potentially significant impacts related to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, transportation, and tribal culture resources were identified. See, I have some redundant language in this bullet point. With the proposed mitigation, those potential impacts are reduced, any potential impacts to a level of less than significance, and therefore, the project would not result in any significant impacts to the environment. To, there was a public review period for the draft EIR, which ran from October thirty-first through December fourteenth. Eight comment letters were received during the public review period, and those comments were responded to within Appendix O of the final EIR, which has been made available online for the public to review. With respect to public comments, today's staff received three public comments. Two were received from law firms representing Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility and the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters. Those two groups also commented on the draft EIR. The comments received today were very similar to those received as part of the draft EIR, and those have been wholly and adequately analyzed and addressed as part of the response to comments to the EIR. We also did receive a third letter from Preserve Calavera. The author of that letter made a number of statements that staff felt compelled to clarify. The first comment she made was that she reviewed the staff report in FAIR and falsely states that no public comments were received. Eleven were documented in the FAIR. Well, that's not true. There's eight were received. Our comment letter is missing. See separately forwarded letter submitted on twelve fourteen and verification of a timely receipt dated twelve twenty. Our response is that staff accurate reported that no comments were received from the public ahead of the planning commission meeting. Staff did receive eight comments from the public agencies and organizations during the public review period for the draft EIR. Those comments were responded to in the final EIR and included in Appendix O. Preserve Calavera's comment letter and responses to those comments are included in Appendix O and they start on page RTC three seventeen of the final EIR. The graphic on the slide ahead of you shows their comment letter as it's embedded within the response to comments. The other point that the commenter made was the staff report notes the project combined with the Ocean Creek Project exceeds the planned housing units for this corridor by sixty-eight units. It fails to discuss any adverse impacts associated with this, such as traffic and GHG, nor does it address the cumulative impacts such as achievement of RENA or cap goal of fifty percent growth in smart corridors. Our response to that is that that's an inaccurate statement and it misrepresents the information that was outlined in the staff report. The following is a direct quote from the staff report. "The adopted cap includes implementation actions that includes targets for residential development and smart growth opportunity areas." The target for 2024 is five hundred and fifty units. The project would add three hundred and twenty-three units in an identified smart growth opportunity area. In conjunction with the recently approved Ocean Creek Project and its two hundred and ninety-five units, the target for 2024 would be exceeded with a total combined unit count of six hundred and eighteen units within the identified smart growth opportunity areas. Also, this snippet is from our Climate Action Plan, and it talks about the implementation action. What the box outlined in red shows what that goal is. That goal of fifty percent future residential growth within smart growth opportunity areas would be a phased approach with phase one, two, and three. There was a target for twenty twenty, and there's a target for twenty twenty-four. We're on track to meet that target for twenty twenty-four with approval of this project. Finally, the EIR prepared for the project found that there were no traffic-related impacts, GHG-related impacts, nor were there any cumulative impacts identified with the proposed project. With respect to the city's RENA obligation, the project helps move the city closer towards compliance with respect to the city's allocation of twelve hundred and sixty-eight units in a very low-income household category during the sixth housing cycle. This is an aspirational, and it also helps us move forward to the aspirational goal outlined in the Climate Action Plan of fifty percent of new residential units within smart growth opportunity areas. This table is out, is a snippet out of our housing element, which shows our RENA allocation as it's spread out through the various income categories. And you'll see here that very low-income category is the largest of the three lower-income categories at twelve hundred and sixty-eight units over the housing cycle of eight years. Finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2022 P twenty-nine certifying, oh, this is not the right slide. So we recommend that you adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-three dash twelve, certifying the EIR for the project and approve the development plan and density bonus by adopting Planning Commission Resolution twenty-two three dash oh seven, P oh seven. That concludes my presentation. I know the applicant has prepared a presentation. Following of that presentation will be available for any comments that the planning commission may have.
Thank you, Sergio. Before you go, can you go back to the, I was making notes as you were talking, but I was curious about the whole parking situation. I think I followed, but if I could have you go through that one more time, maybe a little slower for my.
Sure. So being a project that's subject to a density bonus application, there's certain standards outlined in the zoning ordinance in section thirty thirty-two. Projects within a half mile of a major transit stop, which the Melrose Transit Station or Sprinter Station would be considered a major transit stop, are subject to a parking ratio of one-half space per unit. As proposed, the project is providing five hundred and twenty-six spaces. So the obligation is a hundred and seventy per applicable law and ordinances, but they're proposing to provide five hundred and twenty-six spaces. And I also mentioned in my verbal presentation, were this project not subject to a density bonus, the parking requirement would be six hundred and eighty-three spaces based on the different unit mix and amount of commercial provided.
Yeah, that's where I got lost for a moment, but, okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Sergio? Okay, I think we'll have Commissioner Custer before you go, Sergio.
I'm just curious. You have some parking. How many parking spaces will be reduced in size because they're next to a column? Do you know?
I've not done that calculation myself, Commissioner Custer, but we could certainly figure that out while we're here in the DIAS, and perhaps the applicant knows the number that would be reduced in width. So it's not that they're reduced in width, but what the requirement is within the zoning ordinance, Article thirty-one, when you're adjacent to a structural column, the space is supposed to be a foot wider than the minimum. As an example, if the requirement is an eight and a half foot with a parking stall, if you're next to a structural column, it would have to be nine and a half feet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, applicant has a presentation. I think we'll go to that first, and then we'll open it up for comments from the public.
Thank you. Good evening. Dan Niebaum with the Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad. I'm here representing the developer for the Madera Melrose Mixed Use Project tonight. And the developer, well, first of all, I want to thank Sergio for his thorough presentation. I appreciate him going through everything in detail and also going through the CEQA items and the letters that were received. We're well aware of those comments and appreciate staff's insight and comment on that. And the, based on the EIR that's been prepared and thoroughly vetted by staff for the project. I'm here tonight also with Mill Creek Residential, representatives John Coletti, Brian Nord, and Mike Greel are in the audience tonight. We also have Vanessa Shuttle from DUDAC with our project team tonight to help answer any questions. I did want to give you a little bit of background on Mill Creek Residential because they have been working on this project for a fairly long time. They vetted the site and the project with staff very thoroughly before they brought this application forward. And they took their time to look at developing a quality project and looking at what would be appropriate on this site. And they've worked with Sergio for a long time on that as well. But Mill Creek Residential is one of the largest and most respected multifamily developers in the country. In fact, last year, they were the third-largest developer of multifamily properties and the fifth-largest builder. And they also won an award last year for the best property management. It's voted on by residents in their communities. They do a number of communities nationwide, but they do have a strong presence in San Diego and properties in North San Diego County. You know, they're a vertically integrated company, so they design, build, operate, and manage these projects. So they look at them very closely when they're developing them, and that helps them look at producing a better, higher-quality project. But it also, I think, from my perspective and different clients I've worked with, it gives them a lot more insight early on in their projects and what they need and want project to be when it's completed. And I think that helps with produce a higher-quality project down the road. Let me give you a little bit of an example of one of their recent projects. You can just see the quality of some of their development amenities. This is Madera San Diego, and it was open in twenty twenty-one in downtown San Diego adjacent to Echo Park. More on the amenity levels, this type of project has a rooftop lounge. It has a full-size bowling lounge inside the project. This project won a National Design Award in January of this year. Some of the other amenity photos here, again, the rooftop lounge, the bowling lounge, and the amenity spaces. This imagery is indicative of what they do in their common amenity areas, high-quality amenities. The downtown project's a little bit different animal than the one proposed here, but you know, the amenity level is very consistent. Sergio had shown a regional graphic. This one's blown up a little bit more, and I have another one, but I wanted to touch on a few things in just a little bit more detail. But Sergio kind of covered everything in our application. But you know, this is looking at our site, you know, adjacent to the city boundary at this intersection. It really results in the build-out of this intersection. The Melrose Heights Project is underway. We brought that to you a number of years ago, and it's almost nearing completion. You also have the Sky Apartments in Vista, the Preserve Apartments in Vista, and the existing neighborhoods in the city of Vista. You have Light Industrial to the south, and then again, the Melrose Heights Development on the north side of this project site. You know, really, and I'll touch on it a little bit later. Sergio mentioned this is in the smart growth opportunity area based on the Sprinter Station, and it's also in the Sustainable Corridors Plan area for the city. So it is, represents a change in this area, and it is, you know, the sought-after build-out of the site that the city has been looking at in their plans. This is a little bit more of a regional graphic. Sergio showed this, but you know, it's clearly, the site has a strong connection to the Vista Sports Park to the north, which the Sports Parkway aligns with our driveway entrance to the project site, and that makes a strong connection to a park and open space amenity that'll help support the project and also helps support the other projects that are developed in the area. This actually gives you a little bit better view of the Melrose Heights Project coming online across the, to the north side of Melrose and Bovier. Sergio had talked about this. I've shown you this graphic before in other projects, but I think it's very telling for this site. Again, the site's in the OC seven Smart Growth Opportunity Area that's long been identified by Sandegg at this intersection. And it's also coupled with the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan the city's operating forward as part of their general plan. The site is specifically identified as part of the plan as one of the sites ideal for increase in density near Transit Station. It's ideal for mixed-use development, and it helps, again, build out this area as a node of activity near the Transit Center. You know, as we get more and more units online, transit's going to become a much more viable option in this area. This is a color-up of the site plan that Sergio had shown you. Again, building one is the mixed building with the commercial component and the leasing office and amenity areas inside there are support areas for the residents inside. And the site would be highly amenitized with open space areas, you know, robust landscaping, the parking and circulation areas that we went into, Sergio went into detail on. And at the center, building three is really the community pool, fitness, and clubroom area, some of these other amenity spaces that's centralized for the project to provide better access to the whole project area. This slide helps show a little bit on some of the considerations we took with the constraints on this site. Grading was a significant constraint for the site to develop a reasonable pad for this project and to also look at neighboring properties. Building number two is, you know, the closest building to existing residential areas. It's over ninety-five feet set back from that property line. And again, landscaping, significant landscape areas are along the property line and the boundaries. You know, the site has thirty-two percent, the site is building footprint, where fifty percent area is permitted. Over two acres of the site would be covered by landscaping and open space areas. This slide helps just detail some of the existing pedestrian circulation, sidewalk connections, and trails that are in the area, a little bit more detail. Maybe a little hard to see the one, but again, as the slide had shown, we're adjacent to the Inland Rail Trail. There's complete sidewalks, and this project would modify any changes to the sidewalk along the street front if other needed. But there's complete sidewalks along Melrose and along Ocean Side Boulevard, Bovier in this area. The Melrose Class A Trail exists on the north side of Bovier, Melrose Heights Project put that in. The Vista Sports Park Trail exists right here across the intersection from our project entry, which this yellow arrow represents. And again, the existing sidewalks, you know, allow the project to tie in to fairly significant pedestrian and bicycle circulation components that are in this area. And this is just a blow-up of the site for reference again, and you can see the Inland Rail Trail here in gray along the edge of the project site. Sergio mentioned the architecture and displayed this slide. I'm going to display it again a little bit again. The architecture is inspired by Irving Gill, you know, which exists throughout the city. You know, the simple forms and clean lines, kind of white, off-white tones, a lot of horizontal and vertical articulation with this design solution. It's also archway details and colonnade details about this project. Now, this is not one massive building along here in this view. This is the three buildings that front along Bovier. This is the entry in building one, so this is the mixed-use component of building one and the frontage that has the leasing office in it and gives that commercial, non-residential appearance, which is something that, you know, staff felt strongly about and Mill Creek had looked at in developing this project and designing it to give that, you know, connection to this pedestrian frontage along Bovier, connection to the sidewalk in that area. And then you can see the grading that takes up that's out there that, you know, is one of the challenges on this site. So these buildings are tried to pull up or pulled out toward the frontage of Bovier and give a strong presence for the project. And, you know, the architecture, I think, speaks for itself. It's a very high-quality, well-designed project in this area, which will be a nice iconic finish to this corner. This is an enlargement of that pool recreation area inside building three. Again, some more imagery of the amenity components that would be in those areas. And again, a little bit more of the imagery and the amenity spaces that Mill Creek, you know, seeks to put into their projects. This is some of the fitness area imagery that we would have. And, you know, one final thing, we did have a community outreach component to this project. We had a scoping meeting, community meeting over a year ago. We had another community meeting a couple of months ago. And, you know, we had very little turnout at those meetings. We've had very little comments on this project, which I think speaks to the quality of the project throughout. And, you know, Sergio can add more detail to that if we need to, but I wanted to mention that. So we have, and we've filled a number of calls and comments from people throughout the application process. And again, the EIR, the scoping period, comments that were received on that were responded to thoroughly by staff and by DUDAC and by the applicant team. And so, again, that concludes my presentation. We'd ask you to concur with staff's recommendations. We'd ask you to concur with staff's recommendations to accept the EIR and approve the project this evening, and we're here for any questions we may have.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions? Thanks. Commissioner Obama? Go ahead.
I actually have three questions, so I could kind of...
Just put them all together.
You think so?
Yeah.
All right.
Why not?
Well, my first one is, the location of this project, of course, is perfect with the Sprinter, like, right there. The trail, was it the Inland Rail, the inland trail is also surrounding this project. But I couldn't find, and these drawings are small, where these people that live in, like, Building 4 and 5 and 3, how do they actually get to the, these trails? From what I can tell, there's a perimeter fence that goes all around, and they have to walk out to where your driveway entrance is. So I couldn't tell. So on your map, you can show me. I know there's a 20-foot drop between Building 5 and the street. So that's going to be kind of difficult
Right.
to negotiate a trail or whatever. I'm not sure how you can even do certain things there. But they possibly could go between Building 3 and 2 down to the, what is it called? The Inland Rail Trail and also the Building 6 and 1 possibly get to the street. So I'm just trying to say, how can you connect better to the Sprinter with this project? That's my first question.
Okay, sure. And that's a good question.
Sorry.
Again, it comes back to, you know, maximizing the site for this development pad, make drainage work, make the side areas and parking areas work on-site. The connection is really at the project entry and the sidewalk that would come along here. And that question has come up frankly before, how can you not connect maybe over here and down here? Well, we have a 17-foot-high retaining wall along the Melrose frontage, and it's a 20-foot and 12-foot-high wall that are landscaped, or the landscape will be in front of the walls, along the southern property line. So that type of grading operation would take up a great deal of area on the site. We also looked at, okay, what's the connection down here? Would there be, could there be stairs or a ramp? That would enter right onto the bike trail. The sidewalk is exterior to the bike trail right here, more adjacent to the street. There's also landscape areas. The trail's installed, you're probably aware. So that also makes a difficult physical connection for that, to bring people that far down on a ramp straight onto the trail. You know, the site is the site most adjacent to that intersection and to the Transit Center. So it's, you know, you would walk out the entry. I guess people in Building 4 and 5 would have the longest walk, but that's been looked at. And at the end of the day, it isn't, it isn't that far. I mean, we've looked at, what's the distance from interior and back out, the intersection and over. You also have to go up to the intersection. You can't, you came out here, you could not cross Melrose legally or safely at this part of the site. You didn't need to go back up to the intersection across the street or to cross over to the Sprinter side of the, of Melrose as well.
So the idea between 6 and 1, that's not that much of an elevation there. There's no other way you could just, I'm just trying to say, because when people live here, they're going to want to, you know, go where the path is least distance. They're going to jump the fence and make little trails all down through the landscaping. We've seen that with a lot of projects that even have 20 feet between the two different pads. So people are going to try to find their own access. I guess that'll be a situation that'll have to be taken care of later. But I just was wondering, because it's like wonderful where it's at, the transit's there, but it isn't connected greatly to the Sprinter station. I just thought there was another area, I guess you guys have studied it, there is a lot of, you know,
Yeah.
grading going on here. And it's always been like that at that site. So, okay, that was my one question. So it sounds like no. The second one is, okay, Irving Gill is kind of your style of this building, and it's great. But even in the city's building, which is done Irving Gill style, there's a little bit of color here and there. Like, you guys, I mean, I think your style is not bad. I'm just saying it goes, is there any way to accent any kind of color at all in this place? Maybe at your commercial areas, maybe at the entrances into some of the buildings, maybe some tile work like what they did here at the city. I mean, I like the bogan villas on that little trellis. That was my favorite part. But will that really happen? So I don't know if there's anything you guys can do to kind of style it up a little bit with some color. That would be another comment. And then, see, what's my last question? Maybe that's it. Oh, the commercial. So many of these projects we've seen have put in commercial, but really, that's kind of a lost leader. It's just there to get the residential, the commercial never will really work, and developers pay for it anyway, and that's just the way it is. Is there any real, you know, you think drive for this commercial? You think it actually might get used? Has there any been, has anybody come forward and said, I really want to have my coffee shop there?
Well, the space is not leased out at this point, correct?
Yeah.
And as many of these are not. But it's designed to be flexible for that. Coffee shop would be great. Other neighborhood serving uses would be ideal in that space. I think this is a challenging area of the city, you will. And that's one of the things we've worked with staff on over the past couple of years. You know, the Melrose Heights project across the street is required to have a 20,000-square-foot commercial building in it, which I think today it wouldn't be that big. But at the time, that's what went in, and that's yet to be developed at that corner as well. So hopefully, there'll be supporting commercial. There might be a synergy to that in this area and over there. But, you know, it's designed to allow for flexibility of tenants, and that's, you know, one of the best things you could do at this point of the project. And its location at the prime corner entry of the project. And it does allow, hopefully can do some canopies there, and it would allow for that color pop that you're looking for as well at the entry. But there's not a specific user at this time.
If for some reason, commercial doesn't work years down the road, because we've seen this at one of the projects I lived next to, it's never worked and never activated. It's been maybe 12, 15 years now, nothing.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about. So if that happens here, can this owner of this beautiful complex kind of change the use to, like, say, the bowling alley idea or some, I mean, I don't know, something that, because that's going to, is that the end of the world? It has to stay commercial? It can never be changed with the city in the future? Because when it doesn't work, it doesn't work?
Yeah, I defer to Sergio on that answer. I mean, that would depend on city rules at the time.
Sure. So Commissioner Obama, to answer your question, you know, the Section 3042 of the zoning ordinance is fairly flexible in regards to providing a mix of commercial and residential in these mixed-use projects. And this is very typical of what we see in mixed-use projects, is small commercial component with larger, most of the site dedicated to residential development. There's always the possibility to feature to change the use at that particular space. But the city is hopeful that eventually there will be enough rooftops here, that there will be some demand for some small commercial spaces like this, as Dan mentioned, to provide some neighborhood commercial serving uses.
Okay. I guess that's it. And then, so I guess just maybe some color here and there.
Thank you. Any others? Commissioner Obama, is that it?
That was me. I gave it all. I gave all three of them.
It was good. It was good. I liked it.
Went out with a bang.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Dawes, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening. I wanted to go back to the trail or the access going to the Sprinter. So we only have the one entrance, so it's an entrance and exit. And my issue would be, first question is, is there a light going to be there? A traffic light?
Yes, there's a light there.
Okay. And my, so my main issue would be, being that is, this is an entry and exit point, would be the safety for children, because everybody's going out that way. And we all know that children at times think that they're invincible or they're not really paying attention. And directly across the street from that's the sports complex. So mindful that they're going to be wanting to get from point A to point B, and you've got multiple cars that are going to be going through that one point. I like the idea that Commissioner Obama suggested in creating another exit point to drive the children away from that one single entry, exit entry point. Just something to think about, I mean, as far as safety for children.
Appreciate that. That I would answer, though, you know, it is a fully signalized intersection. It'll be upgraded with this project, and it'll be timed with the intersection at Melrose and Beauvieu. But it does have, you know, fully signaling crosswalk markings to go across the street, because that's been looked at in this existing condition as well.
Dan, I don't see any other questions on my little screen here, so we'll let you sit down. We'll maybe bring you back up if there's something else that comes up.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Do, we'll go to slips first if we have any, and then go to the audience.
Chairman Rizales, yes, we have two slips this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Okay. Please come forward. In the order I call your name, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. First speaker will be Ellen Bartlett, and second will be Adam Frankel.
Before I get started, is it okay if I ask Mr. Madera a question? Is it okay?
If you could maybe capture that in your comments as opposed to a specific direction.
My comments are all related to something that Mr. Madera was saying earlier, related to Diane Nygaard.
Okay. Go ahead and make your comments.
I'm not sure. So I, I'm presuming now that Diane, that the Preserve Calavera letter has, that was in the final EIR. Can I just ask, is that correct?
We'll take up your question during our debate later on. So continue with your comments, please.
Well, I, I'm, my name's Ellen Bartlett, and I'm representing Preserve Calavera. And I, I'm kind of a little confused about Mr. Madera's comments, because he went through them really rapidly, and I did not have a chance to fully digest everything he said. And I came here on behalf of Diane Nygaard because she was unable to come here. But I will go ahead and state a couple of other things. I would like to speak some additional comments relating to Diane's letter and some additional comments we have for Preserve Calavera. There has been a failure to identify the current status of achieving our arena numbers by income level. 15% of the units will be very low-income, but what will the income levels of the other 85% be? We would like to know what progress has been made towards addressing the needs of low and very low-income housing levels. Ocean Side continues to exacerbate its housing imbalance and will be unable to provide housing for all if we keep going in this fashion. We would also like to know where the city stands regarding achieving, for the achievement of cap goals that were adopted in 2019. 50% of the housing needs will be within Smart Growth Corridors. And according to staff, 550 units will be within this particular Smart Growth Opportunity corridor. But just between Madera, Melrose, and Ocean Creek Project, there were 618 units approved. So this is over by 68 units. And the staff report also fails to discuss any adverse impacts associated with this, such as traffic and greenhouse gas emissions. We have no idea which portion of the 50% this represents. So how would we know if this is cap-compliant or not? We're not really sure. So I do, we still have concerns about our other, I guess I don't have a lot of time, some of our other issues that were, I assume you all read the letter that was sent by Preserve Calavera, and we do have, still have a lot of issues regarding this project. We do like to see projects on the Smart Growth corridors, and we think this is one of the projects, the type of project we're looking for. But we have a lot of issues still regarding this project that we would like to see resolved first. And I also have just one comment. As I was sitting here, I noticed a lot of palm trees in the drawings. I don't know if that's what's going to be at the end, but we suggest that we shouldn't be putting any more palm trees in Ocean Side, that we should be looking towards other types of trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Adam Frankel. I'm an attorney representing Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. After reviewing the EIR, SAFER concludes that it fails as an informational document and that it fails to implement all feasible mitigation measures to reduce the project's significant adverse environmental impacts. SAFER respectfully requests that you recommend that the city council deny approval of the EIR and instead direct the city's planning department to address the shortcomings we outlined in a revised EIR. SAFER's independent air quality experts with the environmental consulting firm SWEAP found that the EIR's assertion that the project will not have a significant impact on human health is not supported by substantial evidence. The EIR provided a health risk assessment, or HRA, for the project's construction emissions, but did not evaluate the impact of emissions from the project's future operations. This is contrary to current guidance from the State Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessments, or OEH, which recommends that a quantified HRA be prepared for the lifetime of any long-term project lasting more than six months. SWEAP performed an updated HRA based on information disclosed in the EIR and found that the project would produce significant cancer risk for infants, children, and lifetime residents, all of which exceeded the San Diego Air Pollution Control District's significance threshold of 10 per million. Next, SAFER's independent biologist, Dr. Sean Smallwood, visited the project site and reviewed the biological resources survey prepared for the EIR. Dr. Smallwood detected four special status species living on or near the project site and concluded that the project would result in significant adverse impacts to biological resources. He found that the biological resources survey mischaracterized the existing environmental setting and improperly relied on a flawed database review to inform its absence determinations. He also found that the EIR failed to adequately address the project's significant impacts on habitat loss, wildlife movement, and wildlife vitality. Finally, SAFER's indoor air quality expert found an excess cancer risk resulting from the use of formaldehyde in indoor building materials throughout the project. Without mitigation, offgassing of formaldehyde to future project residents, excuse me, offgassing of formaldehyde will result in an excess cancer risk to future project residents of 120 per million and a risk to future project employees in the commercial portion of 17.7 per million. Each of these risk levels are greater, again, than the San Diego Air Pollution Control District's significance threshold, which is 10 per million. The EIR must be revised to analyze, disclose, and further mitigate the significant project impacts which SAFER's independent experts have identified. We urge you to deny approval of the EIR and to direct staff to undertake the necessary efforts to prepare and recirculate a revised EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more slips?
We did receive one more slip. If we could have Edward Richardson step forward. You'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm, sorry. I thought I'd wait right away. I do have two concerns that were brought up, tying to my previous concerns that I brought up at the last meeting. One was that Commissioner Obama, access to the Sprinter line, I agree. I think it, I think we're not working hard enough to find good access to the Sprinter line. Is it possible to bring the rendering or the overview up again?
Go ahead and continue with your comments while we're trying to do that.
Okay. If you look at this elevation, you can see the, the height isn't so high on the north side of this, this building, and also on the south side, where it accesses bike pass slash pedestrian path. My son and I ride on bikes several times a week on that path, and it's well utilized by pedestrians and bicycles. So there's no problem adding pedestrians to that path. They're well utilized already. So I think we, we need to work harder, find good access to Sprinter rather than having people drag them all the way up and back. Just, I don't know if you've ever lived in an apartment, but it's okay in the bud to try to get that one access. And NCTD also agrees that when we need such as this, try to find alternate accesses rather than gated communities. Nevermind. My other concern is what Mr. Dobby just brought up, or sorry, for my nods. There we go. Apologies. I agree. We see a lot of people, kids, trying to cut across us already, going to Sparks Parkway. My real concern is this intersection, if possible, I would like it to be no right turn on red, because what I see often, or even better still, a walk-only signal for kids, because what I see is people are trying to cut the corner, they swoop off, and they, we've gotten tagged or nearly tagged by us, ourselves on our bikes. And I can only imagine all these kids down here would be like super stoked to get down there and play some soccer, and they're not paying attention at all. So anyway, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes our slips for this evening.
No more slips, but anybody sitting in the audience is welcome to come up if you'd like to comment on it. Again, you have three minutes if you'd give us your name for the record. And if you need to bring the mic down closer to you.
Good evening. My name is Mayela Nunez. I am very happy to be here because I had been receiving these letters for a couple of months, but I finally made it, so I'm grateful to be here. I just want to state my opinion. I've been living in the city of Vista for 33 years, and I bought a home, which is in the same neighborhood. We are right next to the trail. And every day, my kids and I go on that trail. And one of my concerns is what was mentioned earlier, that parking is an issue, that entrance, there's this, two elementary schools down the street on Beauvieu, there's Beauvieu Elementary, and then up the street, there is the Leadership Academy. I think it's dangerous because parking, yes, you guys authorize a one parking spot or however many. And then what happens is that they end up parking in the street. And I know this for a fact because I live in the neighborhood. And when we go for our walks, it's like I have to grab both my kids' hands, because it's hard to cross the street. It's, what do we, we can't, there's cars parking and there's blocking, you know, our view. So it's really hard. And it's, there's a, now, there is, there is, you know, the Sky Apartments, there's a sports park, there is the other construction right across the street from where you guys are planning to build more apartments. And it's like, all of that area, it's becoming, you know, yes, you guys are providing parking spots, but then, you know, there's, people are parking in the streets. My other concern is that as we continue to, you know, go on the trails, we're seeing a lot more we're seeing a lot more wildlife near our home. And we live on Starling Drive, and it's, you know, it's really close to that area. And it's not at night, it's like in the evening now. Last couple of weeks, we've been having encounters with coyotes. And so I don't know if I missed the information about wildlife, but I definitely am concerned. Also, I am very concerned because I speak Spanish, and this wire that was sent to my house was only in English. And I feel like the majority of the, my neighbors speak Spanish. And I wish that, you know, more information would be provided for them in their language because I feel like it's our community, but at the same time, our, the information is not being accessible to us. And I do understand that as citizens, it is our responsibility to read our mail, but if we can't, we don't speak the language, I feel that it's important for us to get that information in another way. So we have access to providing our opinion because we are the ones living in the neighborhood. We are the ones that are there. And I know that it's a good project that will provide housing for many and for low-income people, but at the same time, I wish that everybody would have that opportunity to be there with us on an everyday basis. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Anybody else like to come forward before we close out the public hearing? Very good, then we'll bring it back, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to Commissioner for discussion. Sergio, I'm gonna pick up where Ellen left off and ask you, if you wouldn't mind, kind of running through a little bit of, not every detail, but a little bit more, again, on the information that you provided on the letter from Diane Nygaard, and seemed like it was in conflict with the staff report, but you clarified it. I just want you maybe go over some of those points again.
Certainly, Chair Rizales. So I think one of the first comments made in that, and I don't have them memorized, and I don't have my script in front of me, but one of the first comments made was whether or not Preserve Calavera's letter was made part of the final EIR. And I'm holding the final EIR here with response to comments, and there's Preserve Calavera's letter. There's five pages of responses, four pages of responses to that comment letter in the final EIR. I think the other major comment in that letter we received this morning, the late, late morning, was whether or not with respect to compliance with the Climate Action Plan and the goal to build in the future fifty percent of all residential units within smart corridor, um, smart growth opportunity areas, and staff's response is that with this project in conjunction with Ocean Creek Project, we exceed the 2024 target of five hundred and fifty units within smart, having new residential within smart growth opportunity areas. So it's very clear to me that we're, we're in compliance with that Climate Action Plan implementing goal.
Perfect. The only other thing I heard was something about arena numbers and...
Certainly.
Yeah.
So we, we did go over that a little bit in our presentation. I think the, the basic comment was this project isn't doing enough to meet our arena goals.
Right.
Well, this is the project that we have before us. We can't go out and solicit projects to meet our arena goals. We, we process the projects that we receive. This project does its part in meeting our arena goals. This is our, this is a market rate project that has an affordable component. This is not a hundred percent affordable housing project. Those, those projects are few and far between, and the main reason those are few and far between is because funding for those projects is very limited and very competitive. The city is fortunate enough to have one hundred percent affordable housing projects under construction right now, and that's for sixty units for the extremely low-income category that's partially sponsored by the city in the form of a loan and housing choice vouchers being dedicated to that project. And so there is a large number, a large arena obligation for the lower-income categories, and this project does its fair share to move that number, move towards compliance with that number. Will we ever get to that number? I mean, twelve hundred units over an eight-year period for the very low-income category is pretty ambitious, so I'm not sure if we'll ever meet, likely meet that number. If we get projects that at ten percent and five percent increments, we're gonna make some progress towards compliance, compliance with that arena obligation. I'm not sure if that we'll ever meet it. I'm not sure that any city ever meets their arena obligations, a city as large as ours, with respect to their lower-income categories. We don't have any issue meeting our above-moderate housing units requirements. But I think with our pipeline projects, we have already satisfied that requirement for this current, the sixth housing cycle that we're currently in. I'm not sure that we're ever going to meet our obligations for the lower-income categories. It's just the force of the market.
Yeah, fair enough. But we're making progress, like you said. Appreciate it. Commissioner Simons, go ahead.
All right, I'll dovetail on the arena comments since you just made them. I appreciate your comments, and every time this, every time we have a project like this, we kind of get the same comment. But, but I do, I think when we were getting, one of the presentations earlier, I had mentioned, I had made a recommendation that it would be good to present the progress towards those goals when we have these type of projects, like, give us a snapshot of where we're at. I mean, are we above glide slope, below glide slope? And, and I think that was what the comment was trying to address, was like, hey, you, you make these statements, but we never get a, we never get a, we never get a read on where we are in this glide slope. So I can appreciate the comment from that, from that perspective.
Commissioner Simons, if I may, you know, the city does report annually on our progress towards meeting our arena obligation. It's called the Annual Progress Report, and we, we file that with HCD every year. More than just entitlement projects go into meeting those arena obligations. They also include like building permit-style units that are produced, like ADUs as an example. Portions of those count towards meeting our arena obligation for lower-income categories. We submitted our annual housing progress report to the state on April first, which was the deadline to submit, and we're taking that item to council on, at the meeting of April nine, April nineteenth, I think, nineteenth? April nineteenth. And so we are, we do annually report that, but it's not as easy as saying, well, with the seventeen projects we processed within the last two years, this is where we're at for arena, because there's more factors that go into reporting to HCD the progress that we're making on our arena obligations. And it's this very long and complicated spreadsheet that HCD publishes that we have to fill out. And we certainly can bring that as an informational item back to this body to show the progress we made in 2022 towards our arena obligation. But to do it on a case-by-case basis with each project would be disingenuine because we wouldn't be accurately reporting to you actually the true progress that we're making towards those, those requirements.
Sure, that's fair enough, and I would appreciate the information item of having that go forward.
Yeah, like a periodic snapshot.
Yeah, something like that, just so that we get a good idea of, you know, like, what's, what's the demand for meeting? I mean, are we above or are we below? You get it.
Sure, no, and we're happy to bring that, the same report that we provide to city council, we're happy to provide that report here to this body.
Okay, and I had a, another comment about the SAFER objections. So SAFER objected to many of the things in the EIR, as they presented here a few minutes ago. Were those objections raised as comments to the draft EIR?
Commissioner Simons, I'm not intimately familiar with all the comments raised by SAFER's initial letter when the public review, public comment period was undergone. For the EIR, wasn't managing the project at that point, someone else was. But I do know that they were wholly and fully addressed in the response to comments, and the city is very comfortable.
They did comment on the draft EIR, and those comments were responded to, much like the Calavera comments.
Yes, sir.
So those would be included in the draft EIR?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's it.
Great, thank you. The only thing, Sergio, that I wanted to, my last comment was on the information provided to the neighborhood in Spanish. I don't know, is that on the city's obligation, is that on the developers, or both? Maybe it's a...
That's some, Chair Rizales, that's something we have to look into. I'm not sure what the city's obligation is to provide public hearing notices in multiple languages. I know some of the larger cities, as an example, San Diego does do that. You'll get it in three or four different languages.
Right.
I'm not sure what our local policy is, but it's something we could look into and perhaps report back to this body.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I don't see my screen lit up, but I know we spent a little bit of time on the access to, so I don't know, Commissioner Balma, if you want to continue that conversation or make a suggestion on, to the developer, but go ahead.
I was just hoping that there would be some other way, like especially the bike trail access to off this other side of the property. If there's any way to, to access a bike trail down there, they could connect to the bike trail, that would be kind of a better way to, to use this great, we have all these great recreation, you know, amenities around this. That would be a great thing to be able to access to it, so maybe kind of see if there's any way. I mean, I'm looking at the grading there, it looks like it's probably about ten feet, maybe? I'm not exactly sure, I can't tell, I can't read the numbers. But maybe there's a way to do a trail back there just for a bike? And then the other one is like, I still think you can do another access onto Oceanside Boulevard when the grading, like, like one of the applicant, one of the speakers had said, that when you look at that one, you know, layout, there's another way you can actually access, or not just at the intersection, giving people more of an idea to go out and go take transit and not just have to go to the intersection all the time. So I mean, if you guys could work on something else there, I mean, it'd be great if you could do that. And I guess that's pretty much it, transit. But the other thing I was gonna comment on the SAFER objections, I was kind of surprised when, one of them was bought, brought up about construction emissions. Is there such a thing, is like you can't use, what, bulldozers and tractors when you're out there? You have to have some kind of special, you know, equipment? I've never heard of that before, I don't know, maybe this is a new thing that's coming, coming before us. And then the biological for that site, from what I've seen it for the last, I don't know, fifteen-so years, it's been pretty much compromised. If there is some stuff growing there and habitating, it's probably because the poor little creatures have nowhere else to go. But I, and then the formaldehyde thing, I know that I saw, read something, I was trying to find it, that there is an address, they, this applicant has addressed that. There is something about that in how their billing materials, so I'm not sure if you've read that yet, Mr. SAFER lawyer. But making statements kind of just to kind of shock people, I think it's kind of like not appreciated, at least not for me.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate the, the style and of the development. I'm not an architect, but even I can tell that it's, it looks well-designed and attractive. And I also appreciate that it's, it's addressing some of the, the need for housing, particularly at the low, very low-income levels as well. So I'm very much in support of it. I would like picking up on Commissioner Balma's comments if, if the developer, if Dan, if there was some way to go back and take one more look at if access in another location could be done in some manner, that I think would be appreciated to address both access and then safety, picking up on Commissioner Dodd's comment. So I'll look for a motion with all of that, if there's one out there that somebody would like to tee up.
I'll make the motion. Make the motion to approve, certify the environmental impact report and adopt the associated findings of fact and mitigation monitoring and reporting program by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023 P12, and also to approve Development Plan D21-00011 and Density Bonus by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2023 P07 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Malik. I'll look for a second.
I would second, but can we second, can I add a recommendation?
We have a motion on the floor as is. I would turn to the maker and, and offer, you, go ahead.
If there's something you want to add, we'll take that into consideration.
That pedestrian access point, I'm, I'm really concerned about the one, that single entry-exit point to seriously consider a, a second, a secondary pedestrian access.
I guess I would add to my statement earlier that we, that we recommend that the, the developer take another look at access to the, to the public trails for pedestrian and, and bike access to those areas to ensure the safety of, of pedestrians.
Okay, so...
I'll second.
So we have an amended motion to include that the developer and Lightfoot take another look at the possibility of access from the, the development. And now we have a, a second on that motion by Commissioner Dodd's. Any other comments? Okay, let's vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We did have on the agenda another item that was planned to be heard tonight, but it's being continued until April 24th. That's the Sudbury Development at El Corazon. So again, that will be taken up on April 24th. So we'll go to Appeal of City Planner's Determination on the agenda. I see nothing listed, so we'll go to Discussion Items, also nothing listed. And that leaves us with the Commissioner and City Planner Reports. I don't really have anything, I may think of something as others are speaking, but I don't have anything to report. Vice Chair Morrison?
There's a lot of potholes out there, everybody, so beware of them at night. And that's my only report. I have two flat tires in the last two weeks.
Did you?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah.
One was like the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, they are bad, they're bad everywhere. We're not alone. Commissioner Balma?
Well, my report is, this is our last time ever gonna see our Commissioner Custer on the dais, so I just wanted to let her know that I really, thoroughly enjoyed hanging out with you and being part of the commission with you, and I'm not sure if it's too late for everybody. It's kind of so much time, if we can go out and share a beer or as a toast to like, you know, thank you for being such a great person and volunteering and helping out the city. It's nice to have someone like you.
Hear, hear. Hear, hear. And I'll then turn it over to Commissioner Custer, if you want to.
Okay. Well, yes, but thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's been great, and it's been nice working with all of you, and I've enjoyed it and learned a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodd's?
Nothing to report, but I would like to add that it was an honor to serve with you, Commissioner Custer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Simons?
Nothing to report for me, and I'll join you guys if we do go somewhere afterwards.
And Commissioner Malik?
Nothing further to report.
Great. And I'll just add, it's, it's been a pleasure, Susan, to work with you here on the commission and tackle some of these issues as they come forward, and your insight and your comments and your thoughtfulness have always struck me as being very valuable to the commission. So thank you, and we hope we'll still see you around.
Yeah, I'll be around, thank you.
With, oh, City Planner, I'm sorry I left you out.
Thank you, Chairman Rizales. Upcoming items for the Planning Commission at the next meeting on April 24th include a Development Plan and Conditionally Permit for Popeyes Location down in the south end of town in the Lake area. There'll also be the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial at El Corazon that was supposed to be considered tonight will be on that agenda. And finally, we hope to bring the Planning Commission Work Plan for the next two fiscal years forward at that meeting. Moving out to the meeting of May 8th, we have a Padell Development Plan and Conditionally Permit for Padell, California. It's a new racket game, apparently, that's somewhere between tennis and racquetball and whoop, and...
Pickleball.
So it's gonna, yeah, here on a private entity is looking to develop two courts here on the 200 block of South Coast Highway on the east side, so it should be an interesting project. We also plan to bring forward a, a project, a development plan for a, and Conditionally Permit for a farm worker housing project out at West Coast Tomato Growers. I believe it's a, it's a campus-type development plan that includes several buildings, like a common kitchen and enough housing for like three hundred and twenty beds or something like that. It's a well-needed project to support our agricultural community here in the city. Finally, moving on to City Council, on April 19th, we will be taking forward the Annual Progress Report that we submitted to the HCD. And on May 17th, a mixed-use project at 901 Pierview Way will be considered by the City Council. That was scheduled to go on May 3rd, but the applicant has requested a continuance to May 17th in order to inform themselves on draft conditions of approval. And finally, I'd just like to thank you, Commissioner Custer, for your service to the City of Oceanside. It was a pleasure working with you, and if you ever need anything, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, then we are adjourned.